Let me call to order the committee of the whole meeting of the Borough Council for January 4, 2023. Let me add, it's very nice to see the room packed. It would be nice to see this every month. I would ask you to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so at this time, we'd like to recognize retiree Corporal James O'Neil.
Do I need a microphone?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yeah. Not for me, for the people that are listening.
Oh, I forget about those other people. Thank you all for coming today. I know this is an exciting time. I am very, very sad to see you go, I have to say. But I am honored and privileged to present this honorable discharge to Corporal James P. O'Neil, who was honorably discharged from the Pottstown Police Department on the 23rd day of December 2022. This certificate is awarded as a testimonial of 28 and a half years of honest and faithful service. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for being here. I just want to say I've been very thankful for this place to work, friends I've had, and the experiences and the service I've given in this community, in this nation. First I met, it's been about a week or so, and I miss it. I do miss it.
You can come back.
We're hiring.
I just wanted, you know, let me say, everybody who's been involved in my life and this career and everything, but I also want to thank the family, my wife Suzanne, who has sacrificed her life a lot for me through this career, and for my son, who's always been supportive of this profession. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Just make sure that everyone uses the microphones so the people online can hear.
Next, a motion to promote Corporal Peter Yamburk to the rank of Sergeant in the Pottstown Police Department effective immediately.
Excuse me, Dan. Since council is intending to take action potentially on the next five items, it would be appropriate to ask for limited public comment only on those next few items that are listed on the agenda, and I believe they're item seven through 11, before we take a vote.
Right.
Sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. We would ask for a public comment on items seven through 11 on the agenda, and that includes promotions within the police department and a change in Ward Six. Any comments from anyone?
And if there's anyone online that would like to comment, just send me a chat message with your name and address.
No comments under promotions.
Nothing. Okay.
We have one signing up for public comment. Deb Spence, is it related to these next few items? Or do you want me to wait to come back to you later?
Yeah, come back to me later. It's not related to any of these items.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so hearing none, let me move forward. Again, number seven is the motion to promote Corporal Peter Yamburk to the rank of Sergeant in the Pottstown Police Department effective immediately. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Eight is a motion to promote Detective Brooke Hatfield to the rank of Corporal in the Pottstown Police Department effective immediately. Moved in second. A discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Nine is a motion to promote Officer Zachary Robinson to the rank of Corporal in the Pottstown Police Department effective immediately. Moved in second. A discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Eight is a motion to promote Detective Brooke Hatfield to the rank of Corporal in the Pottstown Police Department effective immediately. Moved in second. A discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Ten is a motion to accept the resignation of the Sixth Ward Counselor Michael Paulus. Moved in second. A discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Eleven.
Why do you do that presentation? Do that presentation?
in the fidelity and abilities of Peter C. Yamburk, we do appoint to the rank of Sergeant in the Pottstown Police Department to rank as such from the fourth day of January 2023. This appointee will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which appointed by doing and performing all manner of things thereto pertaining, as we do strictly charge and require all persons of lesser grade to render obedience to appropriate orders. And this appointee is to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting according to the rules and regulations governing the discipline of the Pottstown Police Department, given under our hand and the seal of the Corporation at Headquarters, Pottstown Police Department, this fourth day of January 2023. Congratulations. It is my pleasure to present this to you. To all who shall see these present greetings, know ye that reposing special trust and confidence in the fidelity and abilities of Zachary S. Robinson, we do appoint to the rank of Corporal in the Pottstown Police Department to rank as such from the fourth day of January 2023. This appointee will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which appointed by doing and performing all manner of things thereto pertaining. And we do strictly charge and require all persons of lesser grade to render obedience to appropriate orders. And this appointee is to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting according to the rules and regulations governing the discipline of the Pottstown Police Department, given our hand and seal of the Corporation at Headquarters, Pottstown Police Department, this fourth day of January 2023. Congratulations. While not to detract from any of the other promotions, if you could all stand for this If you don't know. I'm so excited. You're such an inspiration. Brooke Hatfield is the first woman in the history of the Pottstown Police Department to be promoted to rank. And so, it is my honor to read this to you, and I promise I'll try to get through this a little better than last time. There's a lot of big words in here. To all who shall see these present greetings, know ye that reposing special trust and confidence in the fidelity and abilities of Brooke E. Hatfield, we do appoint to the rank of Corporal in the Pottstown Police Department to rank as such from the fourth day of January 2023. This appointee will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which appointed by doing and performing all manner of things thereto pertaining. And we do strictly charge and require all persons of lesser grade to render obedience to appropriate orders. And this appointee is to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting according to the rules and regulations governing the discipline of the Pottstown Police Department, given our hand and the seal of the Corporation at Headquarters, Pottstown Police Department, this fourth day of January 2023. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
I tried it, nothing works.
No comment. Big thing to say.
Here, we'd like to heat down. Will you open the window? Can't open the window either.
We'll work on it.
What if we just opened the doors on each side? Get any drift?
No, you see the sweater freeze.
Okay, returning to number 11. Seeking a motion to adopt a resolution, fill in the vacancy of Pottstown Borough Council pursuant to the Pennsylvania Borough Code and appointing an individual as a Pottstown Borough Counselor of the Sixth Ward for a term to expire January 1, 2024.
Make a motion to appoint Andrew Minostra.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, John. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Where? Okay.
Okay. The ayes have it, and I would ask the mayor, could you swear him in? We had one motion, but no others. You have a memo, Rose? No.
Dan, while we're waiting, I just asked to confirm with Ginny that Mr. Minostra has provided a residency affidavit that's required under the Borough Code, which I recommend be in Borough possession prior to administering the oath. Ginny, is a residency affidavit in your possession?
Yes, it is, Mr. Garner. I have it here dated December 29.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anything else? Okay. If you would, please.
Chuck, protect us. Make sure we got our i's dotted and our t's crossed, Chuck. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mr. Minostra, if you would, please join me up here. And repeat after me, sir. I, Andrew J. Minostra.
Aye, Andrew J. Minostra.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Want me to just write his name? Just cross it. Let me just write his name.
Congratulate Mr. Minostra.
Mr. Minostra, I apologize for not being there in person to congratulate you.
That's Lisa.
Sorry, I'm homesick.
Yes.
8:00 AM. Yes, ma'am.
We'll figure that later.
No, I did.
Okay.
Andrew, don't worry about it. I'll fix it.
Okay. Before you get that seat warm, I've got a call for an executive session. We'll be out discussing terms of zoning, and we will return.
Dan, just to clarify, it is litigation. The item we will be discussing is the zoning variance request of St. Paul's Church 931 North Franklin Street, which is an appropriate topic for executive session. Thank you.
Okay, continuing with number 12 is the subcommittee reports. Anything from transportation? Nothing. Efficient methods. Counselor Lewdowski.
I had a meeting last month, but I don't have my notes ready. I will get back to you guys on that.
All right. Move that to Monday. Thank you. Ordinance review. Counselor Prochel.
No meeting, but I believe we'll be meeting this month.
Will be. Okay. And economic development and business. Ms. Lee Clark. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. So, I wanted to give you some statistics we had run from the Bright MLS Real Estate Report for commercial properties. The median price of 2022 for a commercial property was $359,500. We do continue to be challenged with non-tax-producing properties within the borough, and unfortunately, some of those properties are some of the highest assessed value within the borough, which continues to mean that there are less tax revenues. Commercial leases had a median price overall of $1,375. As far as residential properties, the median price last year in 2022 was $189,950. That is compared to an overall Montgomery County price of median price of $410,000. So, there were properties that are sold. There were 28 properties that came at a median price, sale price, residential price of a median sale price of $80,000, and then the sales greater than $100,000 had a median sale price of $195,000. So, I thought they were interesting facts and figures that you should be aware of. We continue to look at every opportunity to monopolize on land that is available to us here in the borough to bring business, the business community here, and to raise those revenues.
Shouldn't that make us more attractive? We have some of the lowest-priced real estate in the county.
It does, but we continue, I met with a business today that continues to talk about getting their properties reassessed because of the high taxes, and as you know, we are challenged because the school district and the borough have the same geographic lines, which is unusual. So, it does bring, and the other thing that I want to make everyone cognizant about is our buildings, our old buildings come with a lot of costly warts, and to bring them up to code, it is very expensive, and in fact, we are paid, is working with one of our legislators to look at a pilot program at the state to see whether we can get some help with development money in bringing these buildings up to code, because sometimes the numbers just do not work. There is no way that they can rehab a property and then either operate within it or lease it to someone else. The numbers just don't work.
Okay.
That's my report.
Under the board's infrastructure.
The report's in your pack.
Anything to add? No. Land Bank. No. Nothing? All right. Emergency Services. Chief Hand or anyone?
No, he's not here tonight.
No. Is he coming Monday?
No.
No. All right. Human Relations. Ms. Levin, good.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, Madam Mayor. Martin Luther King Day is January 16. It's to celebrate the life and achievements of the influential and American civil rights leader, Dr. Martin Luther King. The Pottstown branch of the NAACP, where we have a Martin Luther King program at 7:00 all Monday, January 16, at Mount Olive Baptist Church, which is at 240 Mineral Street, and all are welcome to attend. January is also National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. This is dedicated to raise awareness about human trafficking and to educate the public about how to identify and prevent this crime. The commission's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 10, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
What was the time of that event at all of Baptist?
7:00.
7:00. Okay. Library. Midi, are you? Oh, you're on. Good.
I'm on. Hi. So, good evening, everyone. I am excited to have finished my first year as Executive Director with the library. Looking forward to this year. Last year, our theme was Rediscover Us, and the 2023 theme for the library is Reimagine Us. So, we are really taking a look at our library and what services we provide and what services the community needs, and we're going to kind of mesh those together so that we become a real cornerstone resource for the service area. We are looking for some board members. If anybody is looking to serve on a nonprofit board, we are also desperately looking for a part-time janitor and groundskeeper. And we have two fun things happening in January. We have our winter reading program, which is a challenge for all ages, so that goes from 0 to 150, whatever your age is, we've got a challenge for you. And we also have a new mascot, and we will be launching a naming campaign in January, so stay tuned for that. So, hope to see you all at the library.
Okay. Thank you. Rick, anything to add, Joe?
The packet's there. I did want to mention about the fact that membership is constantly going up. I think it was the mid-700, and I believe there was 17 more last December. So, you know, it's good that the membership is constantly improving.
Good.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Pottstown School District. Counselor Lindsay.
I didn't attend, oh, well, I didn't attend, nor did I watch it on video the month of December. I took that off.
Okay. And Mayor Hendrick, your report?
I also took off the month of December.
Good. You should have.
Happy New Year, everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday with family and friends. I promised to be short today. Since last time, I drove around and awarded prizes to the homes that participated in the Mosaic Holiday Decorating Contest. I would like to see more participants next year. I think instead of asking for applications, if I could ever get my council people in line to do Ward Wars, then maybe we could have everyone put a little committee together, drive around, take pictures of the holiday lights, and then post them on Facebook to vote, instead of trying to track people down to put applications in. We did the polar bear plunge. I want to thank Parks and Rec, all the volunteers, Mike, as always. It was a wonderful event, so thank you. It was not that cold this year, and I did not come home with anything metal in my shoes. So, all in all, it was wonderful, and the weather was perfect. And after that was the inaugural polar run, which I did not participate in because I wanted to go home, because I was wet, but I believe they had a successful event. I think 155 people showed up. No. Sorry. Thank you. 135 showed up to do the run. Andy, do you have the number for the polar bear plunge?
137.
137. Nice. Nice. There was a lot of people. It was a great event. It was nice to see a bunch of new faces. I also had the opportunity to go to Longwood Gardens this year to see the holiday lights. I wanted to do something to remember my mom, who passed away, and surprisingly, to my astonishment, I turned around and there was this huge tree in Longwood Gardens with a big tag saying Art Fusion 19464, and it was decorated in all of these ornaments made by children of Art Fusion ages 7 through 17. It was so awesome. It made my day. I wasn't expecting it. I don't know why I didn't know about it, but it was great. So, thanks, Art Fusion, for participating, and it's nice to see that we're represented in all different counties. Coming up, January 28 at 7:00 PM, I will be uniting Samantha Miller and soon-to-be-husband Matt in Borough Hall and charging my customary rate of $150. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Mr. Keller. Managers report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple items tonight. I'm going to try to keep it short, given the length of the agenda. Regarding some of the questions that we got from the ICE that was I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday with family and friends. I promised to be short today. Since the last time, I drove around and awarded prizes to the homes that participated in the Mosaic Holiday Decorating Contest. I would like to see more participants next year. I think instead of asking for applications, if I could ever get my council people in line to do Ward Wars, then maybe we could have everyone put a little committee together, drive around, take pictures of the holiday lights, and then post them on Facebook to vote, instead of trying to track people down to put applications in. We did the polar bear plunge. I want to thank Parks and Rec, all the volunteers. Mike, as always, it was a wonderful event. So, thank you. It was not that cold this year, and I did not come home with anything metal in my shoes. So, all in all, it was wonderful, and the weather was perfect. And after that was the inaugural polar run, which I did not participate in because I wanted to go home, because I was wet. But I believe they had a successful event. I think 155 people showed up. No. Sorry. Thank you. 135 showed up to do the run. Andy, do you have the number for the polar bear plunge by the way?
137.
137. Nice. Nice. There was a lot of people. It was a great event. It was nice to see a bunch of new faces. I also had the opportunity to go to Longwood Gardens this year to see the holiday lights. I wanted to do something to remember my mom who passed away. And surprisingly, to my astonishment, I turned around and there was this huge tree in Longwood Gardens with a big tag saying Art Fusion 19464. And it was decorated in all of these ornaments made by children of Art Fusion ages 7 through 17. It was so awesome. It made my day. I wasn't expecting it. I don't know why I didn't know about it, but it was great. So, thanks Art Fusion for participating, and it's nice to see that we're represented in all different counties. Coming up, January 28th at 7:00 PM, I will be uniting Samantha Miller and soon-to-be husband Matt in Borough Hall and charging my customary rate of $150. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Mr. Keller, manager's report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple items tonight. I'm going to try to keep it short given the length of the agenda. Regarding some of the questions that we got from the ice that was forming on the streets during the recent frigid temperatures, these are due to private sump pumps, and this is something that the borough is working on rectifying over the next several years. So, in the spring, we'll be undertaking a project to install additional piping and inlets at Grace and Fight Streets to capture discharges in these areas. And this was mainly paid for through our Community Development Block Grant through Montgomery County. And we'll proceed with other projects in other problem areas as grants become available or as the $50,000 annual contributions from the authority are received, and I'll keep you posted on those. Couple items of good news to pass along with the signing of the fiscal year 2023 federal budget. The borough was awarded $3 million in funding through the House Appropriations Committee to begin the design, engineering, surveying, and preliminary construction work for the extension of Keystone Boulevard to the Stowe Interchange. And this will be a good start for us while we seek additional funding for construction. So I just have to give a big shout out to Congresswoman Madeleine Dean. She really spearheaded the effort to bring these funds to Pottstown, and we really couldn't have done it without her. So look for more information on that to come soon. Also, we were awarded $403,000 from the PCCD Local Law Enforcement for replacement of pole cameras and other associated infrastructure for the police department. So we had a pretty good end of the year grant-wise. And then also, following up on a previous grant project that we're finally in the process of closing out, the reconstruction of the arch collapse at 42 Walnut Street. This project is now substantially complete as of this week. And the driveway was poured over the arch this week, and a contractor will be back soon to do a walkthrough and finish up some of the odds and ends. So, again, just a big thanks to Joe Cerisi and Senator Mensch and Representative Hennessy for helping us secure the funding and actually creating a funding program that would help us replace arches on private property. Also, the contractor, JPS, for their skill and expertise with the project. RVE, we have them here tonight. You'll be hearing from them later. They were the engineers for this, this project. They're also working on the playground for Bright Hope. And also for the patience of the property owner over the past four years. While we put together the funding and the engineering and the construction, we do appreciate your patience, but I think we're in good shape. We're, you know, these, these projects are progress, and step by step, we'll get there. And that concludes my report.
Very good. And tell us about the roadway maintenance agreement.
Yes, so I had mentioned this last month. Draft agreement is ready for council consideration to memorialize an annual financial contribution to the borough from the authority to help offset costs for future roadway maintenance caused by truck traffic impacts to borough roadways as a result of the sludge haulers that come into the sewer plant. So in light of both increasing costs as far as chemicals and also the impacts from the truck traffic, this agreement calls for a 12% increase in the fee that the authority charges to the ball callers for disposal at the sewer plant. Of the 12%, 8% would be directed to cover plant-related costs such as the chemical prices, but 4% of that would, of the increase would go toward roadway maintenance. We estimate with the number of trucks that come in and out of the plant each day, that would bring about $186,000 to the borough in the form of roadway maintenance. So the agreement memorializes that. It will be for a period of five years and could be reopened if new roadway connections are made in the future, such as Keystone Boulevard. And the roadways maintained under this fund would be Moser, Center Ave., Wilson Street, Industrial Highway, Keim Street. And the funds could be used for any maintenance repair or improvement of road base, pavement, drainage, culverts, bridges, and traffic control facilities. So we really appreciate the authority working with us to help us pave our roadways.
Okay. And thank you. Now, tell us about the credit enhancement agreement.
Right, so the credit enhancement agreement that we undertook last year requires updating. This was entered into to help the borough offset revenue that's lost as a result of the authority bond repayments negatively impacting the fee paid to the borough under the sewer lease agreement. So the amended fee agreement, in which the borough guarantees the authority's debt in exchange for a fee, is proposed to increase to $125,000 in calendar year 2023. It, it keeps the original contribution of the authority in line with previous years, and no other changes to that document are required.
Good. 18 is a resolution, the H2O PA Stormwater Arch Rehabilitation.
Yeah, so the next two grants are being contemplated as companion applications, and if both are successful, there will be no match requirement for the borough. The project will undertake the next phase of repairs to stormwater arch segments identified as critical by our engineers. Funding will include the remainder of the funding that's required to begin work at 1200 High Street. Then after that, the priority would be replacements of sections of an arch at the intersection at Hanover and Farmington, which is partially on private property. And then lastly, a segment on the North Washington Street right away, which is totally within borough property. Also included in that grant are maintenance activities such as repointing some of the rock, underpinning the foundations, and so on. The grand total on this grant is $1,488,146 from the Commonwealth Finance Authority.
Okay. We'll list that for Monday. And the small water?
Yep, so this would be our matching grant to the, to the one above. It would be for the same projects.
Right. And we'll list that one. 20 is the fee resolution amendment.
Yeah, so we'll have the full list ready for everyone's review by Friday when we post the agenda. Summary of, of some of the kind of major items on there, or new items that we're looking at this year will be new trash rates. We'll be billed to customers starting in February at a rate of 86, 76 per quarter. The current quarterly rate is 78, 87, so a roughly 10% increase there. We'll establish a business registration fee of $35. And then there's other various fees in there for amending park and rec rental costs, various fees for contractor licenses, UNO, and rental inspections by, by LNI. And again, we'll have that for, that full list for you Friday.
Okay, and since we can't act on this until the 9th, the fees for January will be adjusted?
The fees will take effect as of?
As of the 9th.
Yeah, the, the 10th. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we'll do that Monday. And now, Mr. Garner, zoning variance request for Michael Halt, 992 North Washington Street.
Yeah, thanks, Dan, and good evening, council. We have a number of zoning applications that were submitted right at the end of the year. The first one is for 992 North Washington Street. We anticipate this hearing will be scheduled for the end of January. This one's a bit unusual. It appears that in August of 2020, the zoning hearing board approved the then-owner of the property to construct a second garage on the property. That was constructed at the time. The zoning hearing board, however, placed a condition on that relief, basically indicating that if the property was sold, this garage would have to be removed. Well, the property was sold, and the new owner is now asking for relief to allow the garage to remain. It's been there since September of 2020, and asking that the condition be eliminated so they can use the garage for personal use and just for storage. To our knowledge, there's been no issues with the garage being there or the use of the garage. And if the zoning hearing board hadn't imposed the condition, it wouldn't even be an issue to be heard or for you to consider. So, Dan, I think this is your ward. So I don't know if you have any?
No, it is my ward, and there have been no complaints about that second garage. So if nothing else was?
So, so just, again, there'd be no reason to do anything other than let the zoning hearing board hear the case unless you want to support the request, but it doesn't seem to be a major issue either way.
I'd like to support it. So, let's list that for Monday. Now, it, it is out in my ward, and there's been no complaints, so we'll let him go. 22 is the zoning variance request for St. Paul's Church.
And that was our executive session discussion, so we'll go to the next one. That would be D3S Rentals. That's on East Third Street. I don't, I don't anticipate that this hearing will be scheduled until sometime in mid-February, but nonetheless, since we did have the application, it's on your agenda.
Right.
I believe this is Don's ward, but in, in this case, there is a property that has a duplex on it, and there is also a detached garage that is, has four bays on the ground floor, and is essentially, has a second story, which is presently not improved other than for purposes of storage. This request, the applicant is asking to convert the second level of the garage into an apartment or dwelling unit and is seeking relief to do that. In addition, obviously, by creating another unit, there would be a requirement for an additional two off-street parking spaces, which do not exist. So parking relief is part of this request. According to the, the applications in your packet, I will comment that the application is, is very well-written. It sets forth why they want to do what they want to do. It indicates, and I'm not saying it's truthful, but it indicates that there's, is not an issue with parking, that there's plenty of on-street parking in this location. So that's the request, then it's up to council if they want to take a position on it.
Any comment?
I have no issues.
No issues.
Is there any, is it under conditions of any kind of inspection by the borough or anything, or is there, is that already taken place, or?
Yeah, not, not that I'm aware of. That would have taken place, you know, when they originally built the, the structure.
Okay. Do you know?
Yeah, they're?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Question, Joe. Hey, Joe, sorry, I'm sorry.
Do you know if, when they originally built the building, was it, was the second floor originally built to be storage?
Yes, according to the application, this, again, this, the owner that owns the property now is not the owner that, that built or improved the property. Whenever this owner bought it, there was, the garage existed, there was a four-car garage on the ground floor, and this storage space on the second floor of the garage.
Okay, the only thing I'm concerned about, and this is, this is for public safety, and the people's going to be living up there. I know that if you have a garage on the first floor, you have a residence on the second floor, there's a, there's a separation that has to be required. There's a hour or two-hour separation, as, as required between the first-floor garage and second-floor living space. If that was originally scheduled to be a storage area, that's probably not the case. So that has to be looked at, looked into.
I, 100%, with you, Mr. Kirkland, that, that is obviously an issue of building code that would have to be, again, it, it becomes a moot issue if the request for zoning relief is denied. If it is granted, then licensing and inspections would have to oversee the, the construction of the apartment unit and make sure that there's proper materials for separation, you know, from the garage. No, no question about that.
So, Don, do you want to take a position on this or just let it go?
I'd let it go.
Let it go. All right. So rental, 24, zoning variance request for Munsey Adele at 379 Cherry Street. We lose two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we just received this application on December 30th, so I can almost guarantee you that this is another one that likely will not have a hearing anytime in the month of January, and you'll likely have a chance, if, if you care to, to, to look at it in February. But this property is, as everyone knows, the former Maria Santa Lodge. It's a very, very big building at 379 Cherry Street. The applicant is wanting to use part of the building as a doggy daycare. And again, the application is attached, and you can see the information. So they would need relief to do that. That's certainly not a permitted use there. They would take some of the parking area for an outside area for the dogs. And again, it's, it's for your consideration if you want to take a position. In speaking with Councilor Vanny, she indicated she didn't have a concern with it, but again, that would be an issue she could talk about Monday night.
Okay. We'll talk with her Monday. 25 is the Colbrook Vale Railroad. They want to put it in a walkway for us.
Yes, and, and again, I, I know there is a number of new councilors that probably haven't been around since the beginning, but according to my records, Colbrook Vale Railroad has been talking about the creation of a station and, and improvements in or about Memorial Park since 2014. Probably things haven't progressed as quickly as they would have liked, but the limited issue presently that they're seeking approval of is the construction of a walkway that would go from the road, basically to the proposed or the train station that, that they would erect on, in the park. They would be constructing it, they would be maintaining it, they have a grant to do the work, but obviously, this walkway is in Memorial Park, so you would need to approve it. Staff has no issues with it. There would be a construction and maintenance agreement in place before work got started. I understand the railroad, in conjunction with the borough, has obtained a grant fund, and there is some sense of urgency so these grant funds to construct this walkway can be utilized. So we've asked Nathaniel Guest, who kind of oversees the whole operation, to make an appointment to come to council either next month or March, so he can share with you the overall big plans that they have for the, for the railroad and, and the park. But this is really just asking you, would you allow this sidewalk or pathway to be constructed in the park?
Does he need, does he need approval this month?
Uh, they would like approval of the walkway, yes, so they can move forward. This, again, we need to get an agreement to DCNR, so they can hopefully get started as soon as possible on the grant funds.
Okay, we'll list it for Monday, and I think this is also Lisa Vanny's ward, so we'll, we'll hear from her.
Well, I just, Mike Lenhart and Justin, I, I think they're on board with this. I don't think there's any issues from a staff perspective on, on this pathway, but I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, no, it, you know, it was kind of always in the plan. This is just a scaled-back version of it, and, you know, we want to, want them, we want to do everything to try to get this done as, as soon as possible.
Okay.
And, and Dan, just for some more historical background, it was, I checked back, in 2017, I believe, council at that time voted to grant a waiver of, of land development to the railroad for their overall project. So again, this is a small part of it right now with the pathway. So again, that, that already occurred. We, you know, again, don't see an issue with this, since they want to utilize the grant funds as promptly as possible.
Okay, we'll list it for Monday. 26, the Hill School Chapel Project.
So we've received a request from the Hill School. They submitted an application to seek a waiver of land development, this one and the next item on the agenda. Just to remind council, a waiver of land development does not mean that the project doesn't have to comply with the ordinances. In cases where there are minimal planning issues, this would allow a plan to be submitted, reviewed by the borough engineer, reviewed by any other regulatory authority, including licensing and inspections. This is a request to add, I believe, 1,400 square feet onto the existing chapel at the Hill School. Staff is recommending that the land development waiver be granted. I believe you have at your places tonight a recommendation from Cedarville. So you guys can decide if you would like to grant the land development waiver. Again, the Hill School still needs to follow all ordinances, and if they choose not to, they would have to seek a waiver of those ordinance requirements, which would bring them back to you in any event. But it doesn't seem, at least from a staff perspective... it doesn't seem, at least from a staff perspective, that there are a lot of planning issues that would need to be, uh, addressed with this request for building addition.
Great. All right, we'll list that, Jenny. Uh, twenty-seven, the Bright Hope, Montgomery County, five forty West Walnut Street.
Uh, similar situation, um, we've been approached.
We have the applicants here.
Oh, okay.
Care to make a statement? Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, counselors, Madam Mayor, my name is Joel Johnson, I'm the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Housing Authority. I don't want to interrupt the solicitor, uh, we're here this after, this evening to, uh, request uh, wa- a land development waiver for the development of, uh, or redevelopment of the playground at Bright Hope Community, which is a property that we own and operate here in, uh, Ward Two. So, we're happy to answer any questions, I have an engineering team with me this, this evening, um, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, uh, about our, our requests.
Okay, we have, uh, your request, it, it's in our packet for all of us to read, we've done that. If you have nothing to add, and I think we understand what it is you're asking, so, Mr. Garner? Again?
Sure, but, by the way, Mr. Johnson, I'm happy to be interrupted. But, but certainly, uh, again, we've, we've looked at this internally, and I think you have the Cedarville recommendation as well, staff in Cedarville believe this is a worthy candidate for a land development waiver. Of the playground certainly, um, can be done through, uh, ordinance review by the engineer, and, and certainly would need planning components, so, uh, council can decide if, if they agree, and, uh, certainly if there's questions, uh, representatives are there to answer those questions.
Okay. Any questions? Mayor?
You may not know this, so don't guess. If this is granted and, um, the rebuilding of the playground goes through, what, um, is your proposed date to have that completed by?
So, I will turn to our engineering team from Remington Vernic Engineers, uh, we're, we're teamed with them, uh, for some of the, uh, for all of this project, and they might have the particulars on that.
Thank you very much, uh, Owen Heine with Remington Vernic Engineers, and, uh, to answer your question, this is slated for construction this summer, so, um, odds are that we'll have some landscaping work to do, um, before the season ends in September, but that's our timeline, so.
That's good news, because I went to an event they had, and it was, and they had, and the lady came from the housing, the housing authority, and she did, um, and she got the kids involved in picking where they wanted stuff at and everything. And, um, David Charles had brought it to my attention, he said, "That playground was there when I was a kid," and David Charles is not a young whippersnapper, so, it's good, I mean, because they still have metal sliding boards. By the way, metals, I grew up with metal sliding boards, just saying. So, um, it's really, it's good to see that it's improved, and them kids are gonna be excited. So, yeah, so yes, we're gonna have to have a big party for these babies. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments, and, uh, you are exactly correct, we actually had, uh, two community engagement efforts.
Yep, I was in one of them, yes.
And we had attendance of, uh, over a hundred fifty people.
Ooh, them kids was tearing the piece up, wasn't they?
It was a very lively.
I was serving them, boy, they was.
It was a very lively, engaged, uh, process. So, a- as, as you described, we had, uh, engineers, uh, essentially lay out the various types of playground equipment that, uh, could be selected for the project, and we had the children, it would everyone vote, but it was mostly children that were on what they would, uh, what they would like to see. So, it was, it was a community engagement effort to try to get, you know, people interested in that, and you're exactly right, the playground is very, it's very, very past its prime. Uh, it's probably, embarrassingly probably, more than forty years old. Unfortunately, we've had, you know, a number of financial challenges over the years of the Housing Authority, uh, so it's never risen to the, uh, top of our, uh, priority list, and we have other elevator systems and roofs and boilers that need to be addressed, but we have a, a partnership with the Potsland Area Health, Health and Wellness Foundation.
They were there too.
That, they were there as well. Uh, and I also want to thank the, uh, Borough, uh, Recreation Director, Mr. Lenhart was there.
Yes, the police was there, it was a lot of people, it was.
Pizza, we had ice cream.
Well, yeah, the ice cream truck came, I mean, them kids went whoo, like bees, the honey, it was great. Yes. But they were, they loved it, they felt special there, like you should, their faces and everything, it was, it was nice. It was nice to see that there.
Thank you for those comments, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we will certainly plan to have a, a big celebration, uh, likely at the, uh, groundbreaking, probably in the, in the spring, and then a ribbon-cutting probably in late summer or fall, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll definitely list that for Monday. Okay, Chuck, uh, Hawks Towing.
Uh, yes, thank you, Dan, um, if council recalls, I believe it was, uh, November of last year, uh, council awarded one of the towing, uh, Class A towing, uh, licenses to, uh, Mann's Towing, uh, through a bid process. Uh, at the time, uh, we received two bids, the other was from Hawks. Uh, Hawks withdrew their bid, uh, at that point. Since that time, Hawks has resubmitted a new bid for the vacant, uh, tower position. The new bid is six hundred dollars, uh, six hundred dollars is the minimum, uh, prescribed by ordinance, so, uh, it does comply with the ordinance. Obviously, this has been a unique, uh, situation, we've never had this happen before where, uh, we didn't have two towers. Uh, I think the Police Department would like to make sure that both of these, um, towing licenses are consumed and used. Staff's recommendation is that, uh, given the circumstances, we attempt to equalize the, the bids that were received, uh, we don't know that it's fair necessarily to make one of the bidders pay more than the other, so.
Yes.
Under the circumstances, we would say for Monday night that you, uh, authorize the award of the second, uh, towing license to Mann, and allow staff to, uh, communicate with both towers to try to come up with a equitable resolution of, of the bid amounts, since obviously, uh, we're looking at this after the fact. Just so council is clear, there were no other bidders that, that expressed interest in these two licenses, so, uh, there is no, um, no one's getting left out, but, uh, we want to be fair to Mann's, uh, under the circumstances, so we'd like to, uh, speak with both of the towing, uh, agencies and see if we can come to a resolution that's fair to both. And that would be our plan, so hopefully you would agree with that.
Um, Chuck, I have a question, um, do you know why, that, um, why Hawk pulled out and coming back?
Well, I know that originally when they withdrew Trinita, the reason they said was that they thought that they were putting in a bid to be the sole tower for the borough, and that was obviously not correct. Our ordinance is clear that there are two, uh, towing positions that, uh, can be issued licenses under these circumstances. So, when they quote "learned" that they wouldn't be the only tower, they withdrew their bid. They said that they based their bid on the fact that they thought they were getting the entire borough. That's clearly incorrect, um, I don't know whether that is accurate, but that was the reason for the withdrawal.
Oh, so they thought they was, they thought they were gonna get the whole borough on that half? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So, now that they're knowing that they're gonna get half, they came back?
They've came back, and with, with a. They reduced them out. And again, we want to be fair to Mann's, uh, under the circumstances, so we would go back to both and just talk about the, the amounts. The minimum under the ordinances, six hundred dollars, that's a valid bid. And, uh, we'll certainly let you know what we find out if you're inclined to go along with that staff recommendation.
Can they both have six hundred bids? Or is one, it would be like six?
Yeah, they.
Well, that's for the staff to negotiate.
Yes, yes, they, they, they can both have six hundred dollar bids, um, and we'll, we'll work to try and equalize that, and that's, that's our goal.
But initially, they did not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Minimum bid is six hundred. And we've al- we've always had bids right around six hundred historically, we've taken a look, and, and they've always been six hundred. Or six oh one, six ten, you know, something like that.
But in this case, both bid substantially higher initially. And then went, withdrew.
Right, that's why I'm saying, some wishy-washy stuff going on, Hawk, don't, don't, mm-mm.
Well, it's certainly an unusual situation, uh, we, like I, like I said, we've never had this issue raised before. The ordinance has been in effect for a number of years, and again, we want to make sure that the Police Department has the resources and, and the towers available. You know, and the town's divided into, you know, east and west ends, uh, and it's worked out well in the past, it's the first time we've really run into any issues that I can recall with, with the whole process, and we'll try and rectify that.
Yeah, we always had, we, we've always had to, that's why I didn't understand why he come in and come out. Is he gonna, I mean, I just want to make sure he's.
So, Monday, we can approve to let staff negotiate?
Yes, and, 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 uh, yeah, award, award the second license to Hawks, you know, subject to a negotiation.
Right. Okay. Got that, Jenny?
Yes, I do.
Okay, municipal police vehicle bid award.
All right, so we have one, um, winning bidder on, uh, municipal bid, uh, for a former police vehicle, and it's, uh, recommended that we awarded to Caleb Ringleberg in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. We'll list that for Monday. Water pipes and fittings. In fact, any of these bids, are you going to submit the numbers?
No, um, they, uh, opened, but we haven't had a chance to, uh, get a recommendation, so we'll have that to you by, um, Friday, and then, um, yep.
And that would be all thirty through thirty-four?
Yes.
Okay. You'll get the information to us. Thirty-five, uh, back to Mr. Garner, the septages.
Uh, yes, um, the authority, I guess, at one of their meetings earlier in the year, approved some rate changes for the, uh, the pump and hall sewage and sludge they treat at the plant, uh, as well as some other rates that are high, highly technical in my view. But that information was passed along to Justin and, and my office, and based upon the reading of the sewer ordinance, uh, Borough Council needs to, by ordinance, approve those new rates as well. This just was, was directed to my attention in the middle part of December, so we didn't have a chance to talk with you at December's meeting about this, but in the meantime, we've put together an ordinance, we've advertised the ordinance. I don't know if it's in your packet, but it'll be in your packet, uh, for, uh, for Monday's meeting. But essentially, what it does is just incorporates the, the changes that the authority has made to these types of rates, and in fact, the roadway maintenance agreement that Justin talked about early in their meeting, it's being funded through, uh, these rate changes, so, again, it'll be ready for your consideration, and you'll be able to see all the interesting amounts per gallons and, and how it's calculated based upon, authority issues that I am not familiar with, but it's all there.
Very good.
Yeah.
Put that in for Monday. And the Foxtrot five K.
Yep, so this is the annual, um, uh, race, road race, uh, the Circle of Progress in Glasgow, in the borough streets. Uh, it's in other streets as well, in West Pots Grove, um, this begins at ten AM.
On May twenty, okay, we'll list that. Board vacancies, the Blighted Property Review Committee, uh, I understand all the current members want to continue.
Yes, I'm, although I'm happy we had plenty of applicants this year, but of course, even if you don't, no, if you're not on the committee, you're welcome to come, and in some ways, it's just kind of formality anyway, you're welcome to participate.
Okay. And is that for Monday?
Yep.
Is that the right date? Okay. And, uh, the Borough Authority, we have one interested party for a one, five-year term, and that is Mark Gibson. There's nothing else, we'll list that. Vacancy boards, is that Jim there?
We don't have anyone for it, but.
We have no one for it.
I think he's been, uh, appointed in the past.
Yeah. All right. And the zoning hearing board, one, three-year term, uh, the interested member is Douglas Lenhart.
Yep, he'd like to be reappointed.
Okay. We'll do those Monday evening. We'd like to hear from the citizens who are present, any? Anything online?
Yeah, let, let me start out online first, um, Deb Spence, go ahead, you have, uh, three minutes.
Okay. Um, Maya, I have a, uh, question, and, uh, well, two questions and a comment. One question is, uh, is it possible to get a copy of the amendment that increased the pay of borough manager and, uh, Chief of Police, I believe, um, at the last meeting, was the, uh, agenda? And I know the Mercury had to request a write-to-know in order to get a copy of that. I'm not understanding if that's something that we're using public funds to pay for, that the public can't have, um, an opportunity to look at that. The other question is, is the borough open to a committee or a group of individuals interested in solving the problem of housing and the unhoused in this area via shipping container, sustainable community, powered by solar technology? And if so, how can, uh, this group of individuals, um, meet with council or whoever you deem, you, whoever you, uh, see fit to have this presentation in front of? And, um, I also don't understand how the application for Beacon of Hope's appeal is something that has to be discussed behind closed doors, can there be some more transparency? I don't know if that's because it's, um, something legal, but, um, just a question. And, um, lastly, Pottstown is not the only community that suffers from a huge unhoused homeless community, Bala Kinwood has a tent city. They have it by the train station, and it, I think actually is quite larger than the one here in Pottstown. And their, their, a two-bedroom apart- apartment in Bala Kinwood is five hundred thousand plus. So, it's not just poverty areas or so-called quote-unquote poverty areas that suffer from this issue, it's a countrywide issue that we have. The minimum wage here in Pennsylvania is still seven point twenty-five, seven dollars and twenty-five cents. They're a really low amount, and, um, I, I don't think any family of two, three, or four can live on that, let alone a larger family, so. It's my comment, and, and I look forward to seeing the answers to my question, thank you.
Good, next.
All right, next is Bruce Madera, please.
Good evening. Just an opinion had came up during the meeting. I feel that pointing, appointing a representative is not as democratic as electing someone, but the election may come in time. Uh, borough employees and council members being available to talk and to try to help, uh, citizens, this is very commendable, commendable, I've always thought. Now, lately, very lately, uh, Pico or, or their company, Asplund, they're going through town and putting signs up saying, um, "If you don't move your cars, we're gonna tow them." So, uh, some people besides myself are thinking, you know, "Where do you move your cars?" some, in some cases. And may I, may I praise Kyle in Public Works, who was very helpful, and a cop who discussed this matter with me Monday, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, but I do know the name of the police chief, to whom I had a good conversation today. He's always there for the people and, um, to talk with him, trying to help them. Now, in the seventh ward, it's hard to reach, uh, someone, um, much of the time, do we have representation there? However you try to reach someone. However, you try to reach someone there. At these meetings, you all put out, or most of you, exactly one year ago, rules for council meetings. And the rules advise, do not respond when citizens speak. They could be spoken to later on or gotten back to. But someone getting back to somebody, again, I'm repeating myself, they could get back and try to talk to people, even if they disagree with the person, and try to help that citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next Jamie Sanchez, please.
Hi, everybody. For the record, I live at 200 Maplewood Drive in Pottstown. I'm actually here in regards to 468 North Evans Street. That is the house that is next to my mother. Actually, my entire family lives in that house. That house is owned by somebody that lives in Spring City. He's owned the house for 20 years. I would say the last two years, he's let it deteriorate quite a bit. The issue is trash. My sister owns the house along with my niece and they've called and they've come out and they've cleaned it up. Well, he has now resorted to putting more trash out and now it staches. So my mother didn't have to look at it, we put a screen up. Now she can't sit on the back porch. She's 81 years old. You all know how I am, community oriented, and I will do anything for anybody. But my sister asked him nicely to clean up trash a couple of weeks ago. She ended up getting a note in her mailbox saying, "Do not talk to me, I am off my meds." That is the renter on the first floor. So I talked to Officer Berry after our one meeting here and I told my mother, Officer Berry said, "If he knocks on the door, you ask him to leave and then you call 911." My sister and my niece are not here because they work at night, okay? My mother, if my brother is home, that's great, but if not, my mother is by herself. So she has been directed to, if she hears a peep, call 911. My sister said the other day, the homeowner took a propane tank because the heater was busted. Propane in houses with oil heat? I'm not privy to all of the ordinances and the rules and things like that and the codes. I would like to know that the heater was fixed for my peace of mind and that there's not being propane being used in the home. Because if something happens to that house, it affects my family and I will lose my entire family. And I don't want that to happen. So I need help from the borough to communicate with my family better on what is going on in that house. And I need that, I don't know if it's Section 8, I believe it is, and not all Section 8 is bad because I've lived next to Section 8 and you can't even tell. But at what point do we start making people accountable for the homes that they either bought or they live in? Because right now, it's not accountability, not for that house. And quite frankly, now it involves my family, so I'm done. I'm done being nice. I would like somebody from codes to go recheck that house and talk to my niece or my sister and give them some peace of mind that we're, we're all better. But the trash has gotta go.
It's your time.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mark Boris, please.
I'm waiving my time.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment.
Okay. Well, in that case, how about comments from our councilors? Councilor Proskel.
Well, congratulations again to Corporal O'Neill. I remember, well, it gets to be 13 years ago, I was, my joint counsel was recommending me that I would go on a ride along with the Police Department. So I chose like 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock in the morning and it was paired with Corporal O'Neill. Yeah, it was an eventful evening, but I appreciate his help throughout the years.
Okay. Councilor Bannie, is she still on or no?
She's left.
Councilor Lebedinsky? Nothing. Councilor Lindsay?
Of course, you know, I've got something to say. So over the holidays last year, oh, Happy New Year, New Years, everybody. There were a lot of organizations doing things for the kids in Pottstown. So I just wanted to say a little shout out to Sharon and Russell, NAACP. Missions First had an event there and Claire and Bobby Watson, they gave out ham and turkeys. The Ricket Center, Boyer Town Area Multi-Service threw a party along with the Hill School at the Ricket Center. And Pottstown School District was assisted and Pottstown Care. If you have an opportunity, please go to Keystone Running, they're open. I need to get in there myself. The Polar Bear Plunge was awesome. I got just my toe in the water, I didn't do it, I didn't do the plunge, but I got a little wet. And then the mayor happily gave me a big wet hug after she got in there, so. And if you, if you haven't seen it yet, the Pottstown Firebird's plaque is out front here, so take a look at that. And I think that's it. Oh, Happy New Year to everybody again. The new kid on the block.
Councilor Minostra?
Well, thank you. I look forward to learning about the borough. It should be quite enjoyable. For the immediate future, you probably should not ask me for too many brilliant thoughts because it would be like asking a kindergartner to solve differential equations, okay? I will try to take this responsibility very seriously and I hope to learn how to be a good counselor. Thank you.
I can do differentials. Councilor Kirkland?
Yes, I just want to wish, first, I want to, again, congratulate all the police officers on their promotions. That was a great thing. Also wish all the citizens of Pottstown a prosperous New Year and blessed New Year. And I think that's it.
Okay. Mayor Hendrick?
I have nothing, thank you.
Oh, okay. Hey, we have a new year and I'd like to wish a happy and prosperous and healthy New Year to everyone. We will not be having another executive session tonight, so bidding adjourned.